I'd like to call this council work session to order. I'm gonna go to Herbie first, because he has a meeting tonight that he has to get to. So Chief, what do you have?
Thank you. Just a couple of things to mention. One is, May 19th to the 25th is Emergency Medical Services Week. There's, some of the hospitals and all have extra training sessions that are available to the responders. Last month, I was invited to speak at the Lyons Club Meeting. I did a presentation on the Fire Department Emergency Medical Services. They were very interested in the program. They had lots of questions, and in doing the research of the program, I found that back in 1978, when they were starting the program, it was the Lyons who provided the initial money to the Borough to start up the Emergency Medical Services Program. And last Wednesday morning, at 8:00, on Trenton Avenue, behind the high school, we'll be doing the PROM, PROMS Program. Two-car accident with passengers trapped. We'll be using the jaws of life and other tools to remove them, and the program focuses on PROMs, PROMs driving, and substance abuse. So hopefully, the kids will get the message, and there won't be any incidents for their PROM. And that's it.
Any questions for Herbie?
Thank you.
All right, Herbie, thank you. Gene Williams is here from the Grundy Foundation. Gene, you got a presentation you want to do?
Mr. Council President, council members, Mr. Mayor, professional administrative staff, members of the public, I'm here to represent the AOC, which is the Academic Oversight Committee. We advocate on behalf of students, successful in the classroom and outside of the classroom. You've heard me say before that the AOC basically pays for what our grants do not, cannot provide. So it's supplemental to what we basically are able to do with our partners at the 21st Century. Just a little bit of background, we operate three learning centers during the course of the academic year. One at St. Mark's, one at the elementary school, and one at the high school. And during the summer, we condensed that to basically two sites, one of which is the elementary school, and the other which is the high school. I'm here tonight to ask your support, your ongoing support, for our summer camp program. What we, the AOC, have been doing with 21st Century is providing these opportunities and programs for our children that they probably will not otherwise have. I think it's important to keep that going, the success we've been able to measure during the course of the academic year. We want to keep that going in the summer. So it's important that we do that, because again, we don't want these kids to slide back and then have to, you know, work even that much harder when they get back to class in September. Just a little bit of information, too, in the last 15 months, the AOC has awarded $17,000 in programs and services. And since March 5th alone, we've added another $5,000, for a total of $22,000 in the last 15 months. Those are programs that we sent kids, we helped send kids up to Silver Bay for the high school, Redder's Voice Program. We're sending the 8th grade classes at St. Mark's on the AJ Merewall. They're doing an education and excursion on the Delaware River. We're sending Snyder Girardi Children to Churchfield Nature Center. These are, again, programs, grants that grants cannot provide for, but these are opportunities that our kids, again, otherwise would not have. We have a great work relationship with 21st Century. They are our primary academic partners, and at this point, I'd like to turn the dais over to Stacy Tatum and Evan Banshee from 21st Century. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I'm Stacy Tannum.
I'm Evan Banshee.
And we have a short promotional video. It's a condensed version of the video that we showed from summer camp last year, and we'd like to get this out to the community so that they can know that our registrations are out and we are accepting them. I'm the project coordinator for 21st Century Community Learning Centers here in Bristol Borough School District. We invite rising first through 8th grade students into our Summer Stream Camp for curriculum-based instruction in academics of ELA and math, as well as recreation for sports and performing arts. 21st Century Community Learning Centers is a federal grant owned by the Bristol Borough School District, and we service three sites, Bristol Middle High School, Snyder Girardi Elementary School, and St. Mark's School. We create an atmosphere where kids come to learn and have fun in the arts, athletics, and academics to prevent the summer slide.
I like to summer camp because you can do fun things and learn during the summer.
Our staff consists of certified teachers in the classrooms for ELA and math, as well as small group tutoring sessions. We have college students that join us over the summer for some extra income, as well as employees that work with us all year long.
I like camp because I get to see my friends, and I get to dance, sing, and act. Performing arts is perfect, because when I grow up, I want to be a famous singer. I want to be a famous dancer, and then I want to be a singer and an actress.
Our daily academic activities consist of math and English language arts taught by certified teachers, with a focus on problem areas of the prior grade level to prepare them for the incoming grade.
This camp is a great opportunity for students to practice their reading and writing, and to collaborate with each other for fun and exciting activities. This camp is important for students to bridge from grade to grade, because it prevents the summer slide, it keeps their reading level progressing forward, and it helps students practice the skills that they will need to be successful next school year.
I love this camp because it helps with my academics. Plus, it's a great place to be in the summer.
This summer camp not only enhances academics, but the whole student. Academics, physical fitness, and the arts. One of our main priorities of this program is to work with community organizations. We employ community members, and most importantly, we address the community needs. We have community partnerships with the AOC, which is the Academic Oversight Committee, the Bristol Borough Council, and Grundy Library, that help us to go on our field trips to Snipes Farm, Core Creek Park, and our annual walking trip to Grundy Library. Other local community organizations we work with are Silver Lake Nature Center, Heritage Nature Conservancy, and Franklin Institute, all of which come into our camp to work on STEM education with our campers. We're always looking to expand and grow. We want to invite more campers to join us to have fun while they learn.
Thank you. So that's just a little-
Great job.
Thank you so much. It's all due to the support that we have from the Bristol Borough Council and the AOC. There's a lot that 21st Century provides, but there's a lot that they can't provide because they are federal funds. So the opportunities that the students have over the summer is astounding, and they really do enjoy it.
Anybody have any questions or comments they would like to make?
No, I just, I just like- Nowhere to be in the summertime. Parents go to work, or for whatever reason, they're home alone. So this gets them, and it keeps them going, and they also get to eat lunch, and I believe they, my students work here, I'm not sure. Yeah. Okay, so, you know, unfortunately, this is a town where kids need that, and I think you guys are doing a wonderful job, and I appreciate all that you're doing.
Thank you. And on that note, we do, we will have more information next week, but our free breakfast and lunch is provided by the Archises of Philadelphia Nutritional Development Services. And we are actually considered an open site at Snyder Girardi, which means any child 18 years or younger can come to Snyder Girardi Cafeteria and receive a free breakfast and free lunch within our serving periods. So we have a training on Thursday that will get flyers, that will be able to distribute throughout the community, so that everybody knows that it's there, and they can come by and get some free food.
That's great.
We're also working with the Bucks County Opportunity Council and the YMCA to get food to send home to the students. There's new regulations USDA put down on NDS that we aren't able to send so much food home with them anymore at the end of the day or over the weekend, so we are looking for other partners to donate, so that the kids do have something at home as well.
And that's great, because I even heard of a pantry program at Snyder Girardi, which I think is excellent, the teacher that started it.
Yeah.
And I mean, I see where kids take food home that they want to eat, and their parents are like, "Mom, I bring this home, can you cook it?" It just helps the community, and that is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Absolutely. And the kids work really hard to keep that running, too.
Yeah.
They really enjoy it. It's a good time. So we do have a handout here that has information for not only our Summer Stream Camp, but also the high school, that has various camps that go on field trips as well that are accessible due to the funds that we receive. So I'll leave this here for you guys, but just to give you a quick glimpse of what we're planning for, for this year, we do have a Silver Lake Nature Center trip, Snipes Farm, Grundy walking trip, a walking trip to the marsh with the Heritage Nature Conservancy, and our final Core Creek Family Day, which will be our last day of camp. And we have a couple of family involvement pieces as well. We're going to do a student-staff kickball game and parent relays, an Aladdin performance with our performing arts section, and again, our Core Creek Family Day, which everybody's invited to, parents and siblings, they come, they hang out, they play some games, and thanks to Chief Henry, we got a connection with Jimmy the Iceman, so they'll get water ice while they're there. And we're really excited to keep planning the Camp of Wonders this year.
Thank you.
Just, yeah, Joe.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, this is a, one of the things that's unique in this town, it's an excellent picture of community partnership between the Borough Council, the school district, the AOC, the 21st Century Group, and all the other partners. And it's been going on for about, I guess it's about our ninth or 10th year, and it's just indicative of how everything gets pulled together in this town, and it's all for the kids. And I think you guys do a great job.
Thank you. Thank you. We're happy to go away to Marisburg on our conferences, and DC this year in the summer, and we always brag about the community support that we have. We had a couple of state monitorings. PDE appointed, came down, and she was just blown away with all the support that we have, all the people that come into our schools and work with our kids, and do it for the kids and want to be there with them. So we appreciate everything that we receive.
Couple, cop, anybody else? I'm sorry. Couple comments. One, first of all, I'd like to thank Gene, because 10 years ago, when he came here and tried to sell this program, everybody thought he was nuts. How are you going to raise the money? How are you going to pull this off? But because his drive and dedication to this program really shows the end result, how successful this program really is, and for council to be a part of this-
Absolutely.
I think it's the least we can do for the effort you're putting in. The other thing is that there were some issues last year with some of the kids signing up beyond the date, because they, you can't blame the kid because the parent didn't get him signed.
Right.
So I don't know if there's a way to market this any better. I mean, we have some signs around town. Maybe we could do an overlay, Gene, or something, just saying, "The summer program, the AOC starts, registration dates." I don't know, just an idea.
And we do also, we planned for this year, an evening at Grundy Library on Thursday, June 6th, to have a registration completion night, where parents can come in and fill out the registration right there and put it right into our hands. We are hopeful to get this out and about to town. We have 97 students signed up already. Definitely looking for enrollment in our middle school grades. We always see that kind of drop off a little bit, so we're hoping to offer something a little bit more enticing for them, and St. Mark's as well.
Because I know that kids go home with a flyer-
Right.
-in most schools, but a lot of times, the parent don't even look at the flyer.
Or it goes in the backpack and never seen again.
Exactly. So I feel bad for the child that wants to participate and can't. So if there's a way to make this more accessible to people, or let people realize what's going on, again, maybe the-
That was the idea, that was the idea of the movie. Sorry for cutting you off. The video is to get that on the school website, and get that on the Facebook page, and kind of promote the camp itself with that shortened video. We understand that. We highlighted the whole camp with a very long video, about seven minutes, so we cut it down to try to target parents. We know they're busy, so a three-minute video, they can get the idea of camp, what the campers are going to be doing, and then have an idea of what their campers would be doing every day at Snyder Girardi.
All right. So any other questions? And before you guys leave, Gene and the two of yous want to come up. Mr. Crotrochi has a check for you for $10,000 from the Borough.
Thank you so much.
So why don't you come forward?
I'd like to present this check, $10,000 from Bristol Borough to the Bristol Borough Community Center, and for the summer program, another, we're looking forward to another job, a good job from you people, so keep up the good work. We're very happy with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Amanda, you have something? You want to do a present, or you want to do it later?
Yeah.
Samantha?
I'm going to do a little more, so I want to do a-
How about Samantha?
This presentation's nowhere as interesting as the previous one. Hi, my name is Samantha Brinker. I'm with Gilmore and Associates. I'm here today to update you on Bristol Borough's Stormwater Management Program. The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection required the Borough to get a general permit for stormwater discharges. This is the rainwater that goes into the streets, that ends up in the inlets, that ends, finally leaves into the streams. This is known as your Municipal Separate Storm Source System, your MS4, you might hear the program called as well. Bristol Borough applied for a general permit in September 2017. We received some comments in January of 2018, and then the DEP issued a permit to Bristol Borough on June 20th, 2018. Part of the permit requirements, it's an annual presentation, this will count towards that requirement. The purpose of the annual public meeting is to inform residents about stormwater management and to get them involved. There's more information on Bristol Borough's website under Services, and then if you hit the Stormwater Management link. And also, on DEP's website, there is a B's Stormwater Smart link as well. There's tips for residents about stormwater pollution on those websites. And in addition to the annual meeting, there's new requirements for the permit. The Pollution Reduction Plan was proposed last year, and that consisted of reducing sediment to Mill Creek. And in order to reduce sediment to Mill Creek, a rain garden and a vegetated swale was proposed at Otter Field. The rain garden will go on the northwest corner, outside, away from the soccer field, and the vegetated swale is an existing swale that will be retrofitted along the rear property line. As you know, there's no funding for MS4, for the reporting. We are looking for funding through a Watershed Restoration and Protection Program Grant application to construct these BMPs, these best management practices, as the rain garden and vegetated swale are. The resolution is on the agenda, so I hope you'll look at that favorably if council chooses to do so. And we continue to work on meeting the requirements of the Department of Environmental Protection. Thank you.
Any questions?
Why don't we try to seek some relief from some of the unfunded mandates regarding the MS4? Is that part of the permit process, or is that-
The advanced waiver? Is that what this-
I know this time she was here, we're trying to do some kind of, you know, try to look for some-
Maybe shut it down.
Yeah, the DEP denied the waiver request.
None of it.
So none of it was applicable, and we've approached the EPA through letters, trying to mitigate or reduce these required requirements or regulations, because they're constantly ongoing, and they constantly keep adding to them. They're never satisfied, so to speak. So yes, clean water is an ongoing problem, but at what point do we have, what cost does the Borough have to spend? So we are still reaching out, trying to work with our representatives and see what we can do.
Samantha, you're talking about $300,000, correct? At least?
The rain garden and vegetated swale will cost about $300,000.
And we're trying to get a $200,000 grant.
Uh, I'm sorry. The total cost for the rain garden and the vegetated swale is almost $200,000 for both. But that doesn't include the reporting that we have to do every year for the annual report, which is about $10,000 a year in order to meet the requirements that keep changing.
Well, I mean, I said before that, you know, without a grant, I don't know where, how we even-
Right. That's why we found this Watershed Restoration Protection Program grant. This is a really good fit for the Borough, so we're hoping that they look favorably on it. It's a DCD, Department of Community and Economic Development grant.
Right. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm going to open up public participation. So anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything, go to the podium, state your name.
Joe Rakowski, 212 Mill Street. Thanks for listening to me last minute. Today, I had to make a bit of a rough decision, but it's a much better one, as far as those who are already involved. I'm afraid to present in front of council today with the hopes of approving it. Back in March, I was here for the, for hoping to proceed with the first historic Bristol Borough Farmers Market. We still plan on having it at the Mill Street, crossing Park. Discussing a lot with the local growers and some of the artisans, and the more availability that we see now in the other markets happening on Saturdays. We originally had the market planned for Thursdays. We're simply requesting that we change it to Sundays. Sundays, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that would be a start date of May 19th, running through October 27th. This would certainly open up any issues with the rush hour traffic, any local concerns with the local establishments on the top half of Mill Street. Many of our farmers, they tend to harvest during the mid-part of the week, and they need about a 24-hour period to refrigerate their crops before selling, and that's some of the health board standards. Starting it on May 19th and pushing it back about two weeks helps us further the marketing. Again, like I mentioned, less issues with rush hour traffic. Of course, having it on a Sunday, it's a busier part of the week. Most people tend to do their grocery shopping on that day, and it'll certainly bring us more foot traffic to our local establishments, boat docks in the park. And I think that is about all I need to touch on, unless there's further questions on that.
So basically, you want to move from Thursday to Sunday.
Exactly.
Anybody have any problem with that? Tony?
No, I don't have any problem. How many other places are open on Sundays?
What other places?
On Mill Street?
Most of all, all of us are.
Oh, yeah? Most of you?
Yeah. Yeah, a great majority. I can't speak for all of them, but I know my shop's open, Eat Tree's open, Cantina's open, Calm Waters Coffee's open. Again, I can't speak for everyone, but me, living on the street, I could tell you the vast majority are open on that day. Yeah.
Any other questions?
What was supposed to be the date that you were going to start this?
It was going to be this Thursday, which is why it was a really tough decision on my part, but although we do have a number of vendors who want to do it, it's tough for everyone. You know, it's something that we could have pushed, but I'd rather our opening be as good as it could possibly be. So I think the Sunday market would certainly show that.
All right. Dave?
Yeah, Joe, last time you said you were going to use Antonelli's parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. Did you ever consider using the lot down low? This way, no one would have to cross into traffic?
Well, since you're mentioning that, we did run into an issue with that as well, to where we found out that the insurance cost for using that property would be beyond our budget, although we're very thankful to the Antonelli family for donating that to the market. We simply can't use it. So we will be utilizing the public parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I'll discuss more with Chief Henry as we move on, as far as any, anything we need, as far as foot traffic, as far as that goes.
And it's don't need to be voted on, right? I would say, if nobody has any objections- Nobody has any objections, Joe. Just move forward.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Go to the podium, state your name.
Bill, past the pond street. Good evening. Thank you for your consideration of Joe. He's been working hard on that. Raising the Bar will be providing the Borough with a $300 retainer, or whatever it is, as an escrow for the use of the place for an event, and we expect to get that back, because we're going to behave ourselves. I just want to make one other announcement. On May 23rd, we're having a special event in town called The Taste of Bristol. I think it's unprecedented. We're going to have 12 different Borough restaurants participating at the Center for the Arts, and we're honoring two outstanding individuals in the field of art. We're honoring Joe Segola, who needs no introduction. He's probably the most well-known artist in Bristol, if not part of Lower Bucks County, and we're going to induct him into our Walk of Fame. And we're also honoring Keith Baker. For the first time, we decided we wanted to induct someone from the performing arts. And Keith has been a pillar of the BRT since its inception, and he's an artist, he's an actor, he is a producer, not a producer, but a director, a visionary, and we're really proud to have him there as well. So we're going to be honoring those two guys. We're going to be having food from 12 different restaurants. We're going to have live performances from people from the BRT, and everyone is invited. Tickets are $50. Also, Joe will be having an exhibit in that room for a couple of weeks prior to and after, and that exhibit is free. The Center for the Arts is always free, and we encourage all residents to visit. And of course, I don't know if anyone mentioned it, the Merewall is docked again at the docks, and it's beautiful, and St. Mark's Kids went out on it today, and I believe Bristol High Kids and other, I think there's maybe three different classes of kids going to be going out on that before it leaves, so it's a great asset. Anyway, that's it. I hope everyone, hope to see all of you on May 23rd. Thanks.
Thanks, Billy. Okay, anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Michael Gorman. Just wanted to give a report on the flower sale and the cleanup, another success. Raising the Bar and the community really got together. Special shout-out to Gazaranos and Wade's for sponsoring the flowers. They, again, both weeks sold out. We also had donations for the gloves, trash bags, and vests for the cleanup. Went very well. Just, everybody came out. There was a lot of people who were just community-oriented, bringing coffee and dessert, donuts and things like that. Angelina supplied some donuts. The other thing that I thought worked out great and was a big help, people really loved the fact that the Borough provided the shredding, which was a great thing. A lot of people used that, and Sally was there, and the Borough, the Public Works. And I think the biggest thing that was really cool is that the, on Bath Street, they took how many bags?
15.
15 bags of trash from just underneath the bridge and cleaned it up. And again, thanks to Public Works for working with us, and Mr. Dillon for coordinating the pickup of the trash. So I just wanted to give you that update. Again, another successful year, and there were so many more neighborhoods involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in public participation? That ends public participation. Chief?
Last week, we assisted with a couple other police departments with the Vietnam Tour of Honor. Vietnam veterans went down to Washington, and we provide an escort for the buses when they leave parks, casinos when they come back. Also, street sweeper operations, we issued over 1,000 warnings. So I believe Mr. Dillon, if I'm correct, we're starting this week will be no more warnings.
It's my understanding.
Okay. I guess we're on the same page. Last time, we had a meeting, we had a couple issues that were brought up by the public. One was the Otter Street Stop Sign. We addressed that. Multiple stops, multiple summonses issued. Got some positive feedback from the residents down there. Also, the Jefferson Avenue Ball Field, so we've had officers present up there. As the weather gets warmer, we have these issues regarding- As the weather gets warmer, we have these issues regarding juveniles, and we'd like some assistance from the parents and the adults. This can't be pushed on the police department, just have your kids behave and be respectful of others, and it goes a long way. Thirty-six pounds of drugs were turned in during the Drug Takeback Day. And Mr. Dillon, do we have on the agenda the hiring of Officer Heller tonight for replacement of Ian Stanley?
Yes.
Okay, it's a part-time officer. And lastly, is May 20th Bucks County Police Memorial at St. Andrews Church in Newtown at 7:00 PM for recognizing the fallen officers of Bucks County. That's it.
Anything for the chief?
Is Wade Patrol out? I'm sorry, guys.
Tony?
Two questions. First one is, the amount of drugs, 36 pounds, is that a lot, or compared to...
Significant, pretty good.
And then the second question, of course, is gonna be a parking question I have. Now, somebody gets parked in somebody's driveway, right? And they call the police. And they want, like, in order for them to either get a citation or something on that court, does that person that called the police need to be there?
Yes.
Okay. That's all.
Tony?
Yeah, I got a complaint. Cars and trucks are not slowing down. Green Street going into Maple Street over by the garages. One of the residents told me that the cars are going around, and there's no stop sign at the end. People are coming around rather fast and not slowing down. I asked her if it was during the times when the field's in use, Otter Street Field, and she said, no, it's just, you know, hit or miss, but she said there's a lot of truck traffic also. I don't know if we can take a look at that, or...
Yeah, I appreciate it, like I always, yeah, send me an email on it.
Will do. She, I did have her, she called me before. I had her make a phone call to the police department, and they suggested that, you know, I bring it up.
Oh, sure, no problem. We're here.
Is it documentation wise around that way?
Anybody else? Betty?
Fire hydrants. I know people are not supposed to park in front of them, but it's going on all over town. People are just, because we're limited with parking space, people are just parking in front of them. What can we do to deter that?
Well, we issue multiple summons. We're probably issuing 10 parking summonses a day outside of the Mill Street area. We're issuing a lot of parking. That's too close to the corners. We addressed, we had the problems with the school bus issues reported to us a couple miles back, so we observe it.
Mr. Dillon, I'm sorry. Mr. Dillon, whose job is it to paint, repaint the yellow there?
At the fire hydrant?
Yes.
It should be the water company, but...
Yeah, 'cause they did come out and they redid the cement, but they never, it needs to be highlighted because people are just parking.
Do you have a specific one, Ms. Councilwoman?
I do. I'll send you an email. 'Cause I honestly did call once and waited a couple hours, and no one ever showed up.
You should call them when that happens.
Yeah, well, it's on a weekend. I don't wanna bug you on the weekend.
Everybody else does, so you shouldn't feel any different.
Might be sunbathing or something. Are the bike patrol out yet?
No, they're not. They're going out. We just have the bikes tuned up, they should be going out in the next two weeks.
Okay. And, Mr. Dillon, we talked, I'm bringing it up to you now because he mentioned the street sweeper. Is the street sweeper running better? 'Cause I know towards, I know, I know towards last year, it just, I followed it a couple times, it just...
We weren't, we did a significant, you know, replacement of parts, and this past two weeks, we've had some rain. It's the first time it's really been out. So the first couple times, certainly on some streets with the trees and all, it's tough to get everything. But I think it's working well, to my knowledge, and...
Okay. And just so people know, the street sweeper is not to clean your streets. I mean, it's your job to pick up all the big stuff and have it ready for the sweeper so when it comes by, it could clean up. People think that the street sweeper's supposed to pick up every little thing that's out there, but I mean, if you're a good resident, you should sweep it up and try to clean it somewhat. I mean, it's been a long, crazy winter, and maybe like that, the street sweeper would be better. And I'm saying that because I'm getting phone calls, and I'm telling people, I mean, you know, it's not just the street sweeper that has to clean up, you gotta clean it up too. So that's what I'm asking, but thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, Mayor, what do you have?
Just a couple things. Couple dates. Dare graduation for Snyder Girardi is gonna be Wednesday, May the 15th. From 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM. We're gonna have a dare graduation at St. Marks on 5/16 from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM. Memorial Day, May 27th. I believe there will be a service at the War Memorial. Don't forget Election Day is Tuesday, May 21st. June 7th is the next first Friday. We had an outstanding first Friday this past Friday, but a large crowd, very large crowd. Lot of people from out of town, which is a good thing. On April 23rd, I attended a Save Our Firefighters Awareness Class on how to handle cancer claims for firefighters. This has been a challenge, not only here in Pennsylvania, but all across the United States, going all the way back to 9/11. It can be, the law is a little tricky to negotiate, and they had a class on this. We had about 20 firefighters from Bristol who attended it. As Herb mentioned, Prom Promise is May 8th. If you've never seen that, go up to the high school on May the 8th at 8:00 AM, feel behind the high school. Do the whole program. Actual kids are, like, they were in the accident, they get transported to the hospital, you know, parents are there. It's really emotional, and I think the point gets really, is put across. Somebody mentioned about the Mirror Wall, they're gonna be in town from May 7th to the 11th. I do believe in Councilman Tretsch, he might be able to help us on the, they are gonna be doing some trips, you know, general public. They're here mainly because the, over in Burlington, their docks are, they've had some problems with them, and they can't dock over there. For police or county, radio calls for services month were 1,072 calls. And as Herb said, May 19th to the 25th is emergency health services. And I wanna thank the chief for responding to those concerns that were addressed in last month's meeting with the stop signs and the, some of the other issues, the speeding and so forth. And we appreciate the hiring of Joseph Heller as part-time officer. Ian Stanley was our last officer, and he has left, so we're short one part time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Betty, what do you have?
I just wanted to mention that with the Mirror Wall being here, that I was speaking to Joey and Snyder, and they have actually sponsored some of the children that probably have never been on a boat, so that they're able to go out. And I believe they're having lunch on the boat, and she mentioned that to me. I have to tell you that when I started on council years ago, they sponsored me to go on the boat. I had never been on a boat, and it was a really nice experience, and she wanted to mention it to me. And I think she said that, you know, in the future, if there's anybody out there in the community that wants to sponsor a few kids that, like I said, have never been on a boat, this is something good for the community to do, and it's a really nice gesture. Also, on Lukeville, on Bath Street, I see the fence around it. Do we know when it's going to be...
They issued the demolition permit, and we don't know what they intend to put there yet. There's no application, so...
Okay. And, let's see. That's it. That's it. Don't forget to vote.
Tony, work the out.
Last month, I brought up about the illegal dumping in the alleyway between Buckley, off of Buckley Street, running into Climber. There was a street light that was back there. That has been fixed, it's nice and bright back there. Also, George Waldron had added some pavings, millings back there to make the area more drivable. That was all done up real nice. I'd like to thank him. Storm drains are fixed in front of the Bristol Cantina, and then also on Climber Street. When we get, we get the heavy rains like we just had, Climber Street would just inundate it with water and had nowhere to go, so that's all, that's all fixed. And I'd like to thank them for that as well. What's the policy for abandoning cars? If somebody has an abandoned car and it's on their, on their property, can we, if it has no tags and it's just sitting there, if somebody has a, if they have a driveway, they pull it up past the driveway and it's on the dirt or it's behind the property, it's just abandoned? Is there, do we have anything to address that, or...
Send a, go ahead, Brian. No, go ahead. You send them a zoning notice to have it removed.
Okay.
So if it could be on somebody's property, if it's not registered, or insured, then inspect it.
Inspected.
You live in private property?
Yes.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. There's a lot, I'm around town a lot, there's a lot of, you know, abandoned cars. And we've addressed it before when they're on the street. I didn't, you know, if we could do it in the...
I think if you just send Jim and the chief an email, they'll follow up on it. We have a guy that just handles abandoned vehicles, correct, chief?
In the roadway, yeah. Ellen and I handles the, on the private property.
That's something, okay. Also, I noticed that there's a, so regarding, I call them cleanouts, I guess, I don't know if that's the proper terminology, when, you know, when somebody vacates a property, a landlord, I mean, I see big piles of furniture and things left outside, and I've confronted some people, and they're saying, we have bulk item pickups. I mean, is that, that's not for a trash man to...
What happens is if they put out an excessive amount of trash, that's the landlord or somebody should've taken care of. The driver usually notifies the borough. They take pictures, the borough ends up sending a citation to the owner of that property to get a dumpster, 'cause they're not gonna pick it all up.
Okay. I mean, I have, I have, you know, do we cite the homeowner then, or...
Do we cite the homeowner?
Like the landlord, or whomever owns the property, they can cite? How do we stop?
I believe that's what it is. I mean, if you, let's say you put out 50 bags of trash. I mean, they're probably gonna take it, even though they shouldn't. But if you're putting out trash like couches and furniture and things that are just over the top, look, if you put a little bit out every week, there's nothing you can do about it.
Right.
So, you know, we do have bulk pickup, and we try to pick it up so the streets aren't loaded with trash, you know, mattresses, people put them out. I mean, now they got these laws where they gotta be covered, and so, I mean, for most part, they do pick it up, believe it or not.
I mean, like, like a picture like this, this is, you know, is that considered a cleanout, or...
I can't say it is.
It's a, this is up on the, it's on the sidewalk, it's in the street, people can't park.
Where's it at?
This one was over on, I got a complaint over on New Buckley Street.
Is that my property?
I don't know. I got a complaint from the neighbors over there.
Is that an old one or a new one? 'Cause I had a complaint in New Buckley, too. And there was a lot of...
This was just the...
Recent?
Yeah, they sent me the picture of this, we just done, two weeks ago.
Let me see, I'll tell you if it's mine or not.
Two weeks ago.
That's my property, and it was picked up. I get dumpsters for every job I use, and the dumpster, believe it or not, came and it was already gone.
Okay.
You can go to any job I do, or any house I do, you know there's a dumpster on every one of my jobs. And that stuff was all bagged, and it was two weeks ago. There's no furniture out there.
Okay.
If you notice, you don't see furniture or couches or anything.
No. So I got a complaint, they also said that the trash man took it away.
They did.
They did.
Yeah. I said that.
The dumpster, the trash man came up and took it back.
I came with the dumpster, we were supposed to have a dumpster delivered. I knocked on the neighbors' doors to move their cars so they could drop a dumpster. Nobody was home, so I seen them that afternoon and said, they're coming back tomorrow with a dumpster. 7:30 that morning, I guess the trash guys came and took everything. I didn't need the dumpster.
Okay.
So it saved me money this time. I was happy.
Yeah, that's an awful lot for the trash men to take.
They take it. That's great.
I guess it is great. I mean, that's a lot of, that's a lot of trash. It's...
So what's your point? I'm trying to understand what your point is.
I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's a lot of trash. I mean, it's, that's more than the bulk pickup.
So what do you want me to do? Do I want to take it out of the truck?
No, I mean, it's like, I, so...
But that happens all through town. I mean, I see it.
They do it all.
Listen, here's what I don't understand. They picked up the trash, okay? Do you want me to go find the trash guy and tell him to come back and empty his truck?
No, I just, I just got five dumpsters at my property.
I can get receipts on mine, how many I use.
Yeah, I just, I just spent almost five grand.
I have no problem spending money on dumpsters. You putting building material out, or you putting trash?
I'm doing cleanouts. I bought the house over on Buckley Street, there was personal items left in there. I spent, I spent almost five grand on dumpsters.
That's a lot of dumpsters.
It is, a lot of trash.
Five thousand on dumpsters for one property?
One property.
I'd like to see them receipts.
I'll show them today.
Okay.
1-800-JUNKX, it came out, I didn't touch it, so they came and did it, so it's a little bit more.
I know you didn't spend it on dumpsters.
So I did that.
All right, so your point is, the point you're trying to make tonight is that I put trash out, and the trash guys picked it up?
Yes.
Okay, so you're right. So what do you want me to do?
I, you know, I think...
I can't say that I don't get dumpsters, because every job I do in this town, I don't care where it is, I use dumpsters. I could show you receipts, not that I need to prove anything to you, but I could show you receipts for every job I do in this town, I get dumpsters. This was the first job that I have ever done, and I bought this property. This is mine. This isn't a job. I loaded it outside, RNS was bringing me a dumpster. I couldn't get the dumpster in because there was nowhere to park. It was a Monday. Tuesday morning, the trash guy showed up and took all the trash. So did you want me to go follow the trash truck and say, look, back up and empty everything back in the street? So that's what I understand, what point you're trying to make, that they picked up my trash.
Well, the same thing happened on the 200 block of Rattler Street. There was, there was construction debris there that went to go back of a trash truck back in November.
And it's okay.
Yeah, it was, it was wood.
Okay, so what do you want me to do? I don't know what you're trying, what point you're trying to make.
Get a dumpster.
Why don't I get dumpsters? I always get dumpsters.
Well, not in these two cases.
Okay, so they picked it up, so I don't know what you want me to do about it.
Well, I mean, just looking at it, Tony, I mean, is, if somebody else did, I guess what he's trying to say is, if somebody else did that...
It's all over town, Tony, they put trash out.
I was gonna say, if somebody else did it, we talked about raising the bar and, you know, having a higher standard, whatever. I mean, if there was no dumpster, like, you being a council president, why would you put all this stuff in the street, especially when you know we got parking issues all over towns?
Four people coming to load a dumpster that were on the site. I could not get a dumpster. Do you want me to leave the dumpster in the middle of the street?
No, what I'm saying is, if, when you, all right, so give me the right, you brought this out, and it was supposed to be a dumpster, right?
Let me explain.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying because it's in my ward, this is on New Buckley Street. And we talk about parking all the time.
You're right. So if I had a dumpster there, would it have taken up parking?
Yeah, but you would have been doing it the right way, like you wanted it, you wanted it.
But you're saying about parking.
You broke Chet DeMarcus' balls about in, debris in the stuff. You did that, didn't you?
What'd I do?
You broke, you broke Chet DeMarcus' balls about putting down debris from his jobs in the trash maybe.
Never, never.
You did, you did. I remember. But what I'm saying is, it's not to be in an argument, it's just...
There's nothing to argue about.
I know, but it's just saying, listen, this right here, this didn't go out that day, did it? Because this was, when? When was this?
Monday.
All right, so if this goes out Monday, there looks like, this, it looks like there might be room here for a dumpster on this side. I don't see any other cars. But what I'm saying is, you put it into the street, you piled it up. There's no way in the world that the trash man is going to take all that stuff.
Okay, but they did. So what do you want me to do?
I mean, to me...
Do you want me to pay, do you want me to pay some? I don't understand what you want me to do.
What I want you to do is, I mean, you're saying that the trash man picked this up, how long would it take? It would take him an hour to do it. You're saying they spent there an hour to put this trash in there?
Three hours. I have no idea.
No, I'm just saying, but...
Tony, I don't, I don't know. You're making an issue out of nothing.
It's not, it's not an issue out of nothing, because if there was somebody else that did it, you would be, you'd be blasting them, telling them they're...
I don't get involved with trash. I mean, you're talking about Chet DeMarcus. I have nothing to do with Chet DeMarcus.
I know, you know, but what I'm saying is you bashed him about saying he puts trash out at his house when he drives.
Not bash him.
All right, I'll find out.
If you can prove that, I'm telling you right now, I have never had anything to do with Chet DeMarcus' trash.
Okay.
I get blamed for a lot of things, but that's one thing I could tell you.
Okay. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is this, right? When you, when you say, the beauty of this is, it doesn't matter what you say, because people don't care. Because you have, everybody here, all these council people here, they don't care what position you put it in, because they need it. They don't... That's the beauty of it. They really don't care. Whether you do whatever you want.
Right, I do.
I know, I'm not saying it, but I'm sure you were probably out there with the trash man telling them.
Said, "The president of Borough Council, will you please take my trash?"
Okay, so...
Does that make you happy?
No, it just frustrates me, because I got trash on the side of my house leaning on my fence. Because they put it out there from the apartment next door, they put it out to the trash and they don't take it. And then what do they do? They put it back on my fence again. Now, I had John Miller come out, he, you know, he was able to help me with some other things on Spring Street. He got some of the stuff removed. But what I'm saying is, if the trash men are not taking four pieces of wood and some other stuff, why would the trash man take a whole street full of trash?
I guess they like me.
Well, how do they know it's yours?
I don't know.
They have no clue it's yours. It's just happened to be there and they take all that, right?
I don't know the trash guys, Tony. And if they're not picking up four pieces of wood, then you should notify the borough and find out why they're not picking it up, because they should pick it up.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what usually I do.
Tony, what else do you have?
So, I mean, is this ridiculous? This is what I'm saying, nobody wants to hear it.
Well, first of all, I think we all know it's election time, because Tony could have just...
I'm not even going to...
Not you, not you, but you jumped in for it for Mr. Rick.
I mean, that's ridiculous, Lou.
Well, what I was going to say is, when I have any issues, I call the borough.
That's what's ridiculous, because somebody...
Let me hear it, everybody else.
Because you knew it was his car.
Let me see if anybody else...
Tony, what else do you have?
He's doing it for him.
There you go.
What I'm concerned is, we brought this up before about people getting cited and the...
Hey, Lou, if you reported it, maybe you should have reported it instead of taking pictures.
So what, how, listen to me, besides this issue, what else do you have?
No, 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 that's what I'm saying.
Ball boy. I want to straighten this out.
Maybe you got to look at it.
Oh, yeah, he's funny.
That's the beauty of it. Yeah, I don't want to shut you.
No problem.
Take your seat, or you're going to be removed from here.
For what? Show him a picture?
Sit down.
Sit down.
Mr. Slar, who are you?
Sit down.
Who are you? I don't take the record from you.
Sit down.
I don't take the record from you.
I'm going to adjourn the meeting for ten minutes.
Just a couple of quick things. One, and I just wanted to, some of the cars, I had a note, I was going to talk to the chief afterwards, but... We have, it seems like there's more and more cars parked on the street now with flat tires or bad registrations. And they seem to be a little longer than I would think they'd be allowed. And I know it, you know, I know it's become, I know it's a tough decision for your, for your guys, but...
It's not a matter of a decision. It's a painstaking process through the state of Pennsylvania. And I've talked about this multiple times, and I'll talk about it again. We have to, the vehicle has to be there for forty-eight hours after we're notified. Then we have to send a certified letter to the recipient that owns the vehicle. Once we have that returned letter from the recipient, either delivered or not delivered, is when we can take action. So once you see that orange sticker on the car, that's when the wheels are moving.
I guess maybe if we sidestep the state and there's requirements, if somebody could knock on somebody's door and say...
We do that every time we go prior to, every time we go to a job.
That's what I would like.
That's how we always start.
I'd like to see, if you tell somebody...
Always start with, "Hey, look, you know, you got a flat tire and your registrations or your inspections, make our life a little easier, fix the tire and get it off the street."
As well, you know, I know, I know it's a difficult...
We do it, that's our protocol.
I know it's a difficult situation, but I just think it's, it's one of those things that kind of grows. It's like the tipping point, and if we don't stop, especially now in the warm weather, so if we... But if you're already doing that, that's, that's fine. I just...
Sergeant Aggerson, actually, I came in the other morning and he had four vehicles that I wasn't even aware of that he found on his own and started the process. So, and I agree with you. For some reason, I don't know what happened, it must have been the intersection of Wood and the other day, I forget what's the cross street, but by the church, there was three cars there with flat tires, three different vehicles. I don't know what the situation was. And one was a broken axle, so it wasn't like somebody criminal mischief or something like that. But we agree with you.
But that's like, geez, I'm talking about some of these vehicles are like two and three weeks. One lady told me, you know, the car's out there, it's broke down, it's, sweeper went by, gets a warning, but the second week, it was the rain out when, so it didn't get it. But again, people are concerned, because then when the sweeper goes by, their house doesn't get, their curb doesn't get cleaned, and the guy who parks the car there...
And also, our park enforcement officer, she flags us if the vehicle's there more than one day or two weeks in a row.
Really? All right, when I have somebody that I'm going to let you know too, that has her car parked all year and doesn't move it at all, she has a ticket every week, every week.
Well, that's, the issue is if it's registered and inspected, is it...
Yes, but the street sweeper said it doesn't matter that she won't move it, so everybody else's house could get cleaned too?
Outside of us writing the summonings, I don't know, it's, you know, we act within the law.
Nothing against you, but that's ridiculous, that she, she's able to just keep parking. It's like she pays...
As long as she doesn't mind paying, you know, the fine every week, that's the way it works.
Really? Okay, thank you.
The only other thing I wanted to mention, if someone sees activity over in Burlington Island, today there was a big barge out there, they're doing some, they've got a program right now. And Pat Mulhern, who's on our dock committee, he volunteered and went to a meeting with Burlington, City of Burlington. And they have a program, and it's, it's going to be going on for a couple of months now. But today it was on the Bristol side. A couple of weeks ago it was on the Burlington side. But you can see they're trying to, they're cleaning, cleaning some of the area of the Burlington Island. So I just want to let you know that that's going on. And I also want to thank Pat Mulhern for volunteering. He went to the meeting and he's also on their email circuit now, so he'll keep us filled in on what decisions are made on that. That's all I have, Mr. Carr.
Mr. Gerard.
Yes, thank you. The lot that behind, behind the elementary school that Mr. Ricco brought up earlier, could you get any new information on that, Mr. Dillon?
We're still tracking it down.
We're trying to track down who owns it?
True, yes.
He also trying, trying to prevent them from dumping back there by installing new lights?
We repaired one light, George is going to install another light. And hopefully the residents, they see anything, will text, I mean, will call the police on the non-emergency number and report it, you know, so hopefully they can get there and, you know, arrest these people for littering, loitering, not loitering, littering. And that non-police number is two one five seven eight eight seven eight one one.
Thank you. And the debris that's already there, we're going to address that, huh?
We're going to have to bring in a couple dumpsters that's that bad.
Yeah, well, just on the alley side there, probably a good pickup truck full. The other thing too, on the, again, Amtrak, Jefferson Avenue Bridge on the canal side, the concrete has cracked and dropped down in two inches. It's a real tripping hazard for all the kids going down to the ball fields. I don't, I don't know what we can do with that. Again, it's Amtrak, it's underneath the bridge on the right-hand side, down side. That's all I got. Thank you.
Yeah, a few things. The first, even though I'm not going to be running, there are some things I would like to kind of talk about and keep in people's minds. And the first one is what Bristol Township is doing over at their municipal building with those steels. Like, I think that's great. They're going to be putting fields up, they're going to put like a, it's like a water park, an amphitheater. And just, you know, kind of like a centralized location. And I think that all the stuff that we do in Bristol Borough, that is, I mean, there's great stuff, but it's always down on Mill Street, at the river, it's always there. We don't have anything that brings anybody else in other parts of town. And I just think that that area where the tennis courts are, well, the old tennis courts. Now there's the gardening club and the older basketball courts behind it. But the money that we just spent on Elm Street, Chestnut Street, if we're going to knock that, that would be a perfect location for a central park. And if, you know, if there's a way to do it, and there's nothing for these kids to do in town. There really isn't. I mean, they're walking, I mean, for fun, what they do is they walk the trail. I mean, it's, it's terrible. I mean, that's what they do for fun. They walk the trail, and that's fun for them. I mean, that's the only thing that they can do. And I would just like to see, you know, in the, in the future, is that we start looking at other things for these kids to do. So, the other question I have was, the allegations that, that happened with the rescue squad guy that just got, you know, the, that he was stealing or whatever, he got let go, is, is, Mr. Dillon, is that any way, or Murrow, whoever can answer this question, is that any way going to affect, like, the borough itself? Are we going to be able, because I know that we put into, to that, you know, rescue squad or whatever that is that we do and we donate, is, does that affect our services at all? Is that going to affect anything now? The next thing, Mr. Dillon, I know I've been asking for a ton of stuff, and, you know, I know it's not that easy to get everything, but the last thing that I ask, I just want to see the 2018 actuals for the rec board and the sewer board. It's in this, the 2019 program. Just so I can look at some stuff. Just like when I'm looking at it, it's like all we have is up to is as of nine thirty, 2018, and then year end estimate. So if I could just get like sheets for those two things right there, just so I could look at some things. On top of the other thing that I asked for, I know that they would be a little bit, you know, harder to get to, it'd take a little bit longer, but I think those 2018 actuals would be a little easier.
Here's the, the actuals.
And then, the other thing, like, talking again about the, for the kids budget, the kids in the community. Right now, we have the Grundy Rink. Now, the Grundy Rink costs the borough residents probably, it's like $650,000 a year, whether we use it or not. And the problem that I have with it right now, I would rather not even use it, because it doesn't make any money. And our kids don't even get a chance to really use it. And if they do use it, they got to pay. Costs them like twelve bucks to go ice skating. Now, to me, it just, I feel it's like charging my own kids twelve bucks for gas money so I can bring them to great adventure. That's what I feel like. Like, we're already paying it. I want at least something for our kids to be able to do. Like, I don't know why we don't have something where it's free for Bristol Borough residents to go ice skating. And that's just something, I mean, if we're going to keep that thing open, we're going to pay what... Like, I don't understand why we're paying all this money, because it's not bringing in that money. So we're transferring money from our rec fund, from the Grundy Rink, that isn't making any money. It doesn't make any sense to me. Because we're not making any money, because we can't even pay the $650,000 that's on the, on the loan itself. So, you know, I would rather, let's open it up, let's do something. And I know, it's not as easy as just opening up and, and putting some kind of rec programs or different things in there for the kids. But it's something that we haven't done, I mean, we haven't been able to do anything for the seven years that I've been up here. We haven't been able to get any, anything done. And, which leads to the next point. The next point is this, the election is coming up, and everybody, it, it, it's not just for political reasons. And that's why I'm glad I'm not running, because I want to be able to say these things without acting like it's, it's politics. And it's, if you get, if you keep having the same people, the same faces that support the same person over and over and over again, you're not going to get any change. You just continue to, to come up with the same things, the same things over and over and over again. And right now, our kids in this town are the ones that are suffering, right? There needs to be somebody on this council that is, you know, the, the, the point person or that champion for these kids, right? So that's one thing I would like to see. And then the other thing is that leads to that. And I know people want to talk about me like, oh, you take, you do, everything's personal, you don't care, you know, and they don't understand. It's not, it's not personal at all for me. It really isn't. Because I, I listen to people. And I, and I do. Like, I have Mr. Quatrochi. He believes that it is, I don't care about him or, and it's not true. I care about him, I care about his family. There's no doubt about it. What I do not like is people that put their head in the sand and act like they're not just going along with something that everyone says. Now, I don't got to mention any names, but we know, there's one person that controls all of you, okay? And you are willing to do anything, now, I didn't want to bring you in, but since, you know, you want to chime in, I'll, I'll bring you up and I'll...
Why did I chime in?
Oh, in the back room, you chimed in.
Oh, that's the back room. I'm not in here. I didn't chime in to you.
No, no, but I'm just saying that...
Well, you know what? Let me chime in.
Go ahead.
Because you say kids in Bristol...
Listen, it's not your turn. You had your turn. Can we get him out of here?
Let him finish.
Thank you. All right, so since you want to chime in, and this is the thing that, that drives me crazy, is that you're willing...
I'm chiming in, I didn't chime in.
Hey, you chimed in. We didn't want to go in...
It's the back room.
Yeah, all right.
Ayes.
Not me, I'm, I got the floor.
Tony, you got the floor to direct your questions to make.
They don't question, I was talking.
Well, speak.
I was. All right, so since Mr. Quatrochi wants to chime in in the back room and support and say that he's not a follower, he just doesn't do what the council president wants to do, and they all do. And that's the reality. Listen, I'm not running for office, but it's not personal. Lou, I like you. I like your fam... And I know you get upset about it, but it's not personal. All the things that I talk about are just about running the town. People got to understand, when you're in this position, you're there to ask questions. You're there to uncover things. You're there to find out how to make things better. Not just put your head in the sand and act like everything's great. And when you go up there and you read a soft, you read a, you read a letter on the other side, you know, confessing your love for Ralph, right?
A love letter.
I know, it was a love letter, but it was, it wasn't necessary, right? It was a beautiful love letter, but it wasn't necessary. And here's the reason why. Because he does not care how it makes you look when he does things that nobody else does, and you don't care about it. That's what bothers me the most, right? Because he'll do whatever and you're okay with it. And to me, that's a character flaw. That's all. And, and the thing about it is, and to prove you wrong, when you go in there and you, and you support somebody and you stick your nose in business that isn't even yours, you're going to make yourself look like a fool, right? Because when you say that you went over there and you saw the, the property and there was nothing there and he didn't have it, it was great, he didn't have the dumpster, whatever that you said, right, was a total lie, right? Because you weren't there.
Do you want to bet? Now I want to chime in. Do you want to bet?
Wait.
Now, now, you're saying something. You're calling me a liar. So let me tell you something.
Wait, let me finish, then you can chime in.
You can call a guy right now.
Wait, can I finish?
You can call the car. Call a guy right now that was measuring up the carpet. How about that? What else you know what's going on?
Listen to me. Tony, borough business, can you get to the point?
That's what I'm trying to get to. This is borough business. Because the reality is this, when you have the council president, right, does whatever he wants to do, and the people around him choose to just go along with it, that's the problem that I have. That's borough business. Because you're willing to put your reputation, right, which used to be a lot cleaner and a lot more reputable, into, now you're, now you're his sidekick. And I'm going to show you why. Because that whole thing that he's talking about, his property, it's a total lie, right? It's a total lie. He put that stuff out there and he made sure the trash men took it. He didn't have no, listen, he didn't have no dumpster area. He didn't have no dumpster at all. And Lou's, and Lou's there ready to co-sign for him, and he doesn't even know what he's getting into. That makes me laugh. It's blind loyalty for no reason. It's dumb, right? So when you watch this video, I'm going to put it on here for you, Lou, so you can see. And I didn't see you anywhere in the video, but you're going to watch... video, but you're going to watch your savior, your council president, your best friend, you're going to see him talking to all of the trash people, right? And watching all three of them put all that trash into the back of that truck.
You're right.
Would you be upset with that?
I told you that.
Would you be upset with that?
All's I told you.
Lou, would you be upset with that?
No, I don't know what transpires.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, you see? Because here's the thing about it, when you have people that allow somebody to do things that nobody else can do, and they're okay with it, they're the people you got to get rid of. I don't blame Ralph. It's human nature. When you're in charge, that people want to be in charge of everything, they want to control everything, it's human nature. That's why they have, that's why they have term limits. Because people with too much power, it becomes that way. Right now, we have a town that is run by four people. Three of them aren't even elected officials. At least Ralph is an elected official. The other three are not, and that's Mr. Dillon, Salerno, and Bill Pazil. Three people run the town, and only one of them is an elected official. So, all I'm going to say is this, come May 21st, even though it's not very contested, vote for people that at least have a voice for the people. Go ahead, Lou. How'd you like that?
I would ask you.
You have an agenda.
How'd you like that? Was that pretty good?
Tony, what else? See, the difference is, he doesn't try, he doesn't try to attack you, attack people.
Attack me for what?
You just, you're just, your whole thing today is you're going to attack people. But let me tell you.
Not.
That, that being the slide, you complain about the kids have nothing to do in, in the borough. Well, we've got a, a rec program, we just gave $10,000 to another program for the kids for the summer.
Stop reading. It's the taxpayers, they gave.
They gave them. We as, we are the borough.
Okay.
They gave, we have Memorial Field. We have the soccer field. We're only one square mile. We got a lot of, lot of recreation here for a little town, one square mile. But, you keep talking about nothing to do. We, as council, gave you the authority. You want to do something with the Jefferson Avenue Courts.
Yeah.
We gave you the authority.
No, you didn't. You said go get money, you said.
No, 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 no. We said come up with a plan. We said come up with a plan. Nothing to do with money.
Yeah, you weren't.
You did absolutely nothing.
Not sure.
You came back nine months later, you says, I can't get any money, maybe Ralph can get some money. You never came in here with a plan on what needed to be done or what could be done. You never did anything.
Lou.
This guy comes in, every, you know, he's here all the time. You come in once a month if we're lucky. You miss three, four meetings, you, you never miss picking up, you know, your, your attitude with everybody else.
I got a bad, I got a great attitude.
No, you don't.
Why?
You don't have attitude because you do nothing, but when you do come, all you want to do is attack people.
No, I don't.
And then when you tell people, like, I'm the bad guy, like, now, and I don't care if people think, you know.
Yes, you do.
I, no, I don't care if people think it's coming from you.
You do.
But I do what I have to, but I do what I have to do to make this borough a better place.
Tell me what you done. You were on the committee for party, did nothing. Did you guys ever meet with?
We never had a chance to do anything.
Thanks. Did you ever meet here in Georgetown?
Did I help, help get funding? We had to, we had to get money for the docks, you know? Did, did I meet with other officials, with, with county commissioners?
Or are kids going on those docks? Or are those kids having fun down on them docks?
Well, I think they are, yeah.
Oh, do you? I've never, I haven't seen a kid on those docks that are allowed to go with the docks around the coast.
All right, guys, that's it.
Everything else. But it's not what you want, but you do absolutely nothing but, but complain.
Not complain.
When you had the ball in your court to do anything with the basketball court, you did absolutely nothing. Absolutely nothing.
What ball?
Yeah, let me just, let me end this.
The ball, the basketball.
I'm saying, what ball is in my foot? I've never had the ability, you know? The ball was in your court. You were supposed to do it.
Just a couple things. Number one is, I talked to Kirk about the Bristol Township project. It's 11, it's 11 million. How many million they spending?
It's like four.
Maybe eight or 11, I don't remember.
Pardon me?
It's either eight or 11, I don't remember.
So, first of all, would you vote to spend that on fields?
Well, ours don't have to be that big. I mean, they are bigger.
Oh, would you, you, would you vote to spend 3 million of taxpayers' money where we got to go borrow money?
Yes, since we borrowed money.
Lou?
Yeah.
Okay, so before you leave, we may have that on the agenda.
Okay.
So that's something you may want to support.
I will absolutely.
And in your seven years you've been here, what did you do for the kids?
I did the same thing that everybody else did, because when you're a council, you have to, you have to vote with the majority. And I've always been in the minority. If I was in the majority, there would have been way more things for the kids.
What did you bring up to do, that we voted no to?
Well, it, I mean, even simple things. I mean, we, I'm going to tell you, even just the idea of putting a net, a safety net at the baseball fields, you guys shut in. I mean, you guys didn't even think it was, and you guys didn't even want to put a net up there to protect kids for the moron who put a freaking jungle gym in the left field of a baseball field. You guys, you guys didn't even, you guys didn't even want to support putting a net there to protect the kids. That's one thing. What do you think about that?
We put a net up, and who's the moron?
No, no, you were, you were.
Who's the moron?
Whoever, whoever decided to stick a jungle gym in left field of a baseball field is a moron. That's all. Whoever did it, who did it?
End of that conversation, because now you're getting personal, and I got.
I don't even know who did it!
You know who did it.
I swear to God, I don't know. Swear to God, I don't know.
Do you have anything else?
It wasn't me.
All right. Let me just go through a couple things. First of all, I want to clear up some misperception about the parking garage, the parking lot, the conceptual plan. There was a plan submitted to this council back, how long ago, Kirk? Six months?
Yeah.
Maybe more, that showed a wish list. How many times have we discussed this plan? Am I correct, Mr. Ricchio, that it was a conceptual plan? Am I right?
Yes.
Okay. At no time did council ever say we were moving forward with that plan. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I know it's an election, and people are saying that council's moving forward with this plan, and we're going to build a parking garage, and we're going to charge people to park in it, and we're going to remove the meters on Mill Street so people can park on Mill Street without paying. None of that is true. There is no plan that we're going to be building a parking garage, or an amphitheater, or anything of that kind. I said to this council, we will discuss a plan at a future date, because right now, there is no money to do any parking lot or any improvements unless we get grants.
I didn't, I didn't think there was anything that, I don't remember a discussion about a parking garage. I just remember Greg, Greg had interjected this on about, when he, when he guys mentioned the discussion of an amphitheater, and then, then you had the, the visual concept there, that's it.
But we did discuss as a council that we're not moving forward with anything. Am I correct?
Yeah, there was nothing, nothing was ever voted on, or I think so.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's, that's clear. The other thing is, we're trying to move forward with this waiver for the land development plan that's required for the school district, for the shed. We want to move this forward to speed this up, so we're going to suspend the rules and add some things to the agenda tonight to be voted on. That's one thing, so they can get this project moving forward. I need also, we had a traffic study done, or Amanda came out from Senior Center, and they're not getting enough time to cross Pond Street, because the state law, once the two red lights are red, they, they change, they only give them two seconds. So we're trying to increase that to five seconds, so it'll give them total seven seconds to cross. So when the lights red coming out of the towers, and the lights red coming down Pond, they'll both stay red for more than two seconds. So if somebody's in the middle, it'll help them. There's also another device you could buy for that, but it's, it's very expensive. So we're going to try this first. So that's more. The second thing I want to add on the agenda is that one is the waiver, the timer is the second thing. And as far as the rescue squad goes, just to let everybody know, Mr. Devine brought that up, that it's like somebody stealing money from Little League, or somebody stealing money from it, Boy Scouts or something, there's no implication to Bristol Borough or Bristol Township for what he did. What he did was wrong. Our main concern is that we have a rescue squad for Bristol Borough, when somebody calls 911, that there's somebody responding. We will be continuing our donations with them, as will Bristol Township. They put a lot of checks and balances in place in the rescue squad. From what we're hearing, we asked to meet with the president of Rescue Squad to update us on what's going on, but as far as we know, this was an isolated incident that happened. Everybody's aware of it, it was in the newspaper.
Shame.
You know, it is. It's sad that, you know, what went on, but again, everybody's innocent until proven guilty. So I'm not criticizing anybody right now until, you know, you find out exactly what happened. But it will not affect this borough as far as we're concerned. Last thing is, I want to thank the borough crew for cleaning up the riverfront on Easter weekend. They went out there after we had the, a lot of problems down there, and they cleaned everything up to make sure that the riverfront looked great for the holiday. So what am I missing to put on the agenda?
The hiring of the part-time police officer, Joseph Heller, and also authorize a resolution to apply for a grant in the amount of $189,780 for the Otter Street Field Rain Garden and Vegetable, Vegetated Swale. And these are mandatory regulations that we.
And then author, do we have to authorize for the, the light thing?
What's that for?
The light thing come at the Grundys, do we have to authorize something for that?
Right. So it's the traffic signal to increase the time, which is number?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
It's just a resolution to adjust the timing at the traffic signal at Pond and Mulberry. That's the way it's going to change.
And so we need a motion. Now, you got anything, Bill? Jim, you have anything?
Uh, no.
I need a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Crotrochi, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, before we vote, I just want to say one thing. I didn't know that the TV was still running, and I apologize, Mr. Devine, publicly for telling you to shut your mouth. I didn't know we were on TV when I told you that. So I just want you to.
Well, you, listen, you don't have to apologize.
I want to. I shouldn't be, I shouldn't be discussing that.
Right.
I shouldn't talk like that on TV.
You should have thought like that, period. That's what, I mean.
But I thought it was off, and it was an argument between us, so.
No problem.
I want to go on record apologizing for that.
I'll go on record and accept it.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to authorize hiring Joseph Heller as a part-time police officer.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Oppose?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution to apply for a grant in the amount of $189,780 for the Watershed Restoration and Protection Program, the WRPP, for the Otter Street Fields Rain Garden and Vegetated Swale.
Second by Mr. Gerard. Questions or comments? That was the girl who spoke tonight?
Yes.
Everybody understands that? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
And then I'd like to make another motion to authorize, to adjust the traffic signal to increase time for the Grundys regarding Pond and Mulberry Street.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? What else do we need?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of the Bristol Borough School District for allowance under the land development waiver process set forth in section 301.6 of the Borough Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance, conditioned upon the district obtaining the borough engineers and council's approval of the submitted plans.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a question. What is that for?
They want to build a shed for their football equipment and everything, so we're trying to speed up the process so they don't have to go through a major land development.
Save time and money for them.
Any other comments? Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? What else do we have?
Fire a part-time police officer?
Oh, did you?
Oh, I missed that.
Wake up, Joe. Make a motion.
Crotrochi motion, meeting adjourned.